Okay, oh two. Yep. Alright, uh. So.
Damon, just, uh, I'm sure that they, uh, they're aware that the meeting, uh, is being recorded and that we will be holding a, um, roll call vote.
Yep.
You have to do a roll call attendance.
Yeah, you need to take a roll call attendance.
So we're gonna work on it right now.
Hey.
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, Bill Ambrosino here.
Eric Hodge, President.
Jay Kraus, here.
Damon Tenio here. And we're gonna do a, uh, they wanna do the minutes. Anybody have any issues with them?
Yeah.
I didn't see any issues with them. They, they look fine.
November fourth, November eighteenth, December second. That's.
Yeah. Eighteenth and tw- second, right? Ready?
Oh, the eighteenth?
The first set. The first set. That's long, yeah.
Okay.
Two more.
Don't be unplugging my computer. That was for my wife.
Oh. Ha. You scared me there, Bill.
No. Don't plug him like, "beautiful," he's all of a sudden, hey? Alright, so we're ready to vote on these minutes, or?
Let them finish up here, then we're gonna get it, get going on it.
Yeah, we can have us, um, getting them done first of all, and then.
That's fine.
Then send them through here.
And so you only have one to deal with, and the other two, if you've got time to send them.
Okay. Then if you have to try them today.
Just doing this. Yeah, was the still, I know, still, not eat them. No, yeah, just doing the four. Yeah, just, yeah. Just the four. That's all we have. We don't, the other two are not ready.
Everybody ready motion to, uh, prove the minutes for November fourth, twenty twenty-four?
Seconded. All in favor?
Right. Bill Ambrosino, aye.
Eric Hodge, aye.
Jay Kraus, aye.
Hey, unanimous. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to number three. The continuance in accordance with MGL Chapter forty-eight, a public hearing will be held on January sixth, two thousand twenty-five, Mendon Town Hall, at six P M. for site plan review regarding seven Nipmuck Road. Property owner Ben Pinto, the applicant Flavio Melo of Outstanding Bath Refinishes, is seeking to construct the, to construct two sixty by one twenty-four single-story buildings, associated parking, private septic system, and utilities. Copies of the application and relevant, relevant plans can be viewed by contact. Okay.
Excellent.
So.
So my name is Amanda with Carrier and Onlin. Um, and here on behalf of Scary, Bath and Kettles. So we've been in front of you a couple times, um, and we've updated the plans. The plans, eh, for you are the ones that we submitted initially. Um, we have revised set of plans that are gonna be hand-delivered, um, to DIL tonight. Uh, we're gonna get our revised copy with the traffic impact assessment and updated stone water report to Graves as well. Uh, but we wanted to give the board an update as far as where we're at, what we have left, um, any other questions that, uh, may need to be addressed and, uh, we'll wrap up. So the plans, again, the ones that are up there now are the ones that were submitted previously. So some of the changes we want to bring to your attention. Um, what has happened since is the buildings that are oriented right now, the west building has been flipped and the east building, um, is now on the west. So that front entrance on the, on that building is now on the building on the west side of about a quarter of the street. And the buildings have been realigned, so they will now be in line with each other, um, and parallel with each other. Um, we've also added additional parking in between. If you go to the next, uh, she, uh, one back, maybe? Yeah, the one back, that would be perfect. Um, so the parking in the middle, where you see the ten spaces in between the two buildings, we've added parking, um, in between the two buildings, so now it's on both sides, and we've adjusted the doors, uh, accordingly. So, uh, again, the, the main building will be, um, as shown on this planned building too. So that's gonna be the main building. That's gonna be the one that's constructed first, along with the drainage components and, uh, the utilities on site. Uh, based on our, um, last meeting, we, um, have completed the confirmatory soil testing out on site with, uh, Jeff and our soil evaluator. We've updated the drainage, so we have an updated drainage, uh, report for you. And we've also had the traffic, um, we have a, uh, transportation impact evaluation that was completed by, uh, Van Assen Associates. Uh, so that'll be in your small package as well for the upcoming meeting, um, and for Graves total cap as well. The, based on the traffic study, um, the additional trips associated with this projected site, uh, and based on the use or minimal in comparison to, um, you know, full build out as retail or anything, which is, uh, planned. Um, the other, uh, changes, I believe, uh, Eduardo had emailed over to Dylan today, some updated color renderings of what the buildings are supposed to look like, um, on site. She wants to bring those up. And then some of the, um, one of the only other changes was at the rear of the building that we constructed first on the west side, they did add a canopy at the back of the building. Now it'll be for loading and unloading, and there's two, um, before-by doors that'll swing open, so the trucks won't be going in the building. They'll be backing up uh, adjacent to the building, so they can load and unload.
I think in the last meeting, I'd asked, you know, as part of the, the traffic assessment that we get a breakdown between, you know, uh, like, like customer trips in and out of the site versus materials trips in and out of the site. Were you able to do that as?
Check with the traffic engineer, but I believe that was accounted for in the assessment. So these are the, uh, there. These are the updated renderings, um, and they show, uh, what they're anticipating the buildings looking like in opposed to the metal buildings. I know that the board didn't, wasn't, um, didn't want any more of the metal buildings, uh, warehousey type looking buildings, so they've updated their renderings. So you can see on that back left side, which is the west side, there's an area there, there will be a canopy at that point, um.
Where that square is, where that square area is?
Yeah. Uh, there'll be a canopy going over that, so whether permitted, you know, have a loss for, they can still, uh, load and unload materials, keep them dry. And then, um, so on that one, you can also see the abiding property, um, the house.
Yeah.
Alright.
I don't, has anybody addressed with you the, I mean, it seems like we're making, not making, but we're asking a lot of people to give you, give us some sort of a country or design of a building.
I thought, I thought that's what we discussed at the, the, uh, last public hearing was.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I think it looks great, but I don't think it looks great for Mendon. I mean, I think we're, we're, we're making everybody, does, I mean, that's a great contemporary look at building. I love it. Maybe for framing him. But I just don't, I mean, and I'm maybe, that's just my opinion, we're making everybody, or asking everybody else to do peak roof type of thing.
Yeah, let me ask a question, did, has anybody from your team reviewed the design guidelines?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm outstanding. Yes, I read the design guidelines, you know, when you ask for areas where people can enjoy, there's behind the, the, uh, the second building, there's a big area where we pretend to do like, you know, table, basically do that at lunch, I mean, this is not retail.
I'm talking specifically about the, the building appearance. Uh, it's supposed to be in scope with what's around it. I mean, you got a a building across the street that looks like a barn, you got a building right next door that, that, um, that is more of a country-style building. Um, you got a log cabin next to that, you've got an old redwood drive-in, uh, down just below it, um, I mean.
I mean, I think we're at, we asked a lot of.
If you drive down Route sixteen, uh, even the car dealerships look more in line with the country setting than these do.
Yeah, excuse me, I, yes, we added stones on the foundation of the building to give that rustic look. We changed the color of the trims, because we see a lot of the black and white. We added the, the, the trims that will, you know, uh, right in line with the, the apartment housing that we see here in Mendon. Uh, we went around, we go up with the other some properties. There's some pretty new business that really, uh, you know, really not following these guidelines, but ours, I think, you know, adding those stones and those trims, it would kinda bring that, uh, you know, farm effect, you know, and I don't know what else, you know, I thought I could do like a fencing, like a farm fencing, it would look really nice out in the front, so I mean, we didn't add it to it, but yeah, we can do it.
It's, it's more so a, I think more of a, of the, the square, flat building is what I think he's talking about versus the building across the street with a marijuana plant, places. We had them do a, a lot of things on that building. If you could get it somewhere similar to that, I think you'd be better off. You know, just, I mean, I like this, I, believe me, I like your building. I just feel that what we've already done to certain people, we have to kind of follow suit.
Yeah, the building is actually sloped to one side to facilitate drainage, that, you know, thinking about the drainage, we have that square look fixed, so it, it, it looks better than like a one-size-slope, which would look kind of weird.
One second, that Dylan, is there something that we could show them?
Cape Road.
Yeah, like, uh, like, um, Cape Road or, um, or even the, the marijuana facility.
I asked her to show us the design guidelines. I think that'll show you the renderings in there.
Fine line, the, 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 the new entertainment facility down there, that building there, you know. The gentleman's club, but I mean.
Yes, 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 no, yeah, we can definitely make the front different, you just thought.
It looks like a, some, so when you drive by, it looks similar to the country feel of, of the town, I mean, it's. If you have any picture as a. I think she's gonna try to find you something right now. Yeah, if she could send something to give you an idea of where you can bring your, your design team to.
Yeah, I think there's examples within the, um, design guidelines.
Yes, I, you know, they try to make those areas, you know, like, uh, where people could walk and, uh, hang out, but it's not like a retail, you know, have a lot.
And it's not even that we're looking for, I mean, that's great, I, that's nice, so your, your employees can go out, but we're not looking for that, is looking for more of the building itself, where you can, it just sort of goes in harmony with the town, you know, instead of, you know, the old-school steel buildings, like even the storage buildings that they had them build down across from the drive-in, they have more of a peaked roof, you know, it's, I, I.
Will you have your payment that fence, like farm fence, like we see at the, uh, State House?
Oh, a hundred percent, that, that's fine, but I'm saying the building needs to be more, you need to, the stone looks great, yes, I like that, yep, so, but the, just more of the building, making it look more of, instead of a contemporary building, I mean, I like the building, but what the people in town are gonna, you know.
I don't have one right now, but I'll send you.
He'll, she, yeah, she'll send you something.
Yeah, I can't find it either right away. I know I have it.
It should be on the, um, on the planning board website.
Well, yeah, they have the design guidelines. I was looking for, um, some of our recent plans.
Are you looking for, you know, some of the buildings have the, um, they're like the fake fronted, like, not the fake, but like more of the fronted appearance, are you looking for the building all around?
I, I mean, I think if we could make the front of the building a little bit more countryist, I think if you, I don't, that's my, what does everybody, how does everybody else feel?
Yeah, I'm good.
Yeah, I think if you, you make front, the, p- front appearance, I mean.
Yeah, you know, the front of the building, uh, even if they put a.
It's like, it's almost like a faux frontage, um.
Yeah, you make the front look so like a peak, maybe, or a gambrel of some sort, you know, then, at least when you're driving by.
It's got that countryside type appearance.
Definitely. You can definitely do that, you know?
Yeah, I don't say that you have to do the whole place. You know what I mean? It's, that saves you a lot of money. But I mean, yeah, but like even the windows and everything, you know, you don't really, if, if you just made it somewhere so it, it's looks like more of a farm front end, you know, front of the building instead of a contemporary, you know. I need to stop a while as I can, please, please, please. And she'll be able, and she'll be able to send you some stuff, too.
Dylan, can you put the stolen? Oh, sorry, happy you do.
Don't worry.
Well, you didn't make it look like that.
Here's the design guidelines.
Yeah, I, I sent these to Amanda last time. Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, there's not a lot of.
There's a pitched roof.
Some attachments that might help.
Yeah, I don't see anything. You get the gist, though.
You sent that one, too.
Yeah.
Should be.
Oh, right, the, the bank.
Yeah, the bank, I thought would be good.
Yeah.
Pretty of my building.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, this is a good one.
That'll probably, if they can just get that curb appeal, I think would be.
There you go.
See how something similar to that? You know, I mean, you got the windows still and everything, but if you get a peak roof and something similar to that, it just makes it look a little nicer, you know, for the, from the town's point of view.
This is a, a bank, if they're keeping it still modern, modern apartment stuff.
Yeah. I mean, and I'm saying, not saying the whole building, but if you can, if you can get the front, you know, to look at, right? I mean, is that, Bill, is that how you feel?
Yeah, and I, yeah, even on this one, we had them change the, uh, overhang in the front. They're gonna make that a peak, uh, if you go back to the original.
Yeah, this, yeah.
Yeah, this, this, uh, entrance, uh.
Oh, right, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna make that a peak piece instead of flat. So even they, we had them construct some changes.
Maybe she can send you a couple addresses, if, even if she doesn't have pictures, maybe we can just think, think around town, and then you guys can go look at them and get an idea. Or look.
I'll send this one, yeah.
Okay. Alright, um.
And, uh, Greg, don't we go back to?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put those peaks in the front, but in a couple days, we can get that drawn for you guys.
Yeah, if you can get it, send it over before you, before even the next meeting. If there's anything that we could help, but she'll send you some different stuff as well.
Now, um, all the, you're, uh, presenting the corrected plans tonight for Jeff? Is that what I heard?
Yes, we have, um, two sets for Dylan, and we'll hand-deliver one set to Jeff, um, tomorrow, along with the response to the comment letter. Uh, the biggest comment that, uh, we had from Jeff was associated with the ones we did the confirmatory testing. So we've done that, and we've adjusted the drainage, um, and then the traffic impact assessment, and, um, well, forward along the, the renderings that they've provided as well. And I think that was pretty much the bulk of it.
So they'll, when Jeff will get those plans
Wow.
tomorrow, then we get on for the next meeting, and hopefully we can have Jeff here, and we can, uh, hopefully you can get everything straightened out.
Yeah, I did talk to Jeff, and he's anticipating coming to the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Is there, um, was, did I, uh, in my review of the, uh, tape from the last meeting, was there a question of the fact of screening between the, that house and the buildings?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, they were, they were asking for something there.
Yeah.
Alright, I'd like to see that screening on the plan before we approve.
Any trees there, will be okay? Any trees?
But if you want to use trees.
Avibites, whatever you wanna put there, just.
As, as part of the package, Jeff wins.
Can we see the plan again, Dylan?
Guess I would take that maybe a step further, just, I'm assuming that that's, well, hey, it's just a rendering, but be, uh, it's based on the required setbacks, but there seems to be a lot of room.
Well, there is some.
Size, is there any opportunity to give that?
Which side?
That a butter, a little bit more of a buffer?
Which?
So I guess he's saying maybe move those two buildings?
Can we shift it?
Can you shift everything to the left a little bit?
So as far as, um, so if you see on the left-hand side or west-hand side, there's Thornton Street.
Yeah, I don't think it was the center line, so they, they got a setback issue there, they can't.
Oh, okay.
We've already got requested a variance to be four feet on the side, you have setback.
Okay.
Um, and we can only go to the center line, and I don't believe we can go um, at this point, because the land on Thornton hasn't been conveyed to, I.
Either way, I mean, as long as we can get some trees in there, right, that might just be, they check.
Yeah, they, they, they've got the landscape plan here.
Yeah, so, I mean, we have similar trees to what we're showing there. Um, it's gonna be the red maples. If there's anything else that they.
Is there a size in a, uh, do we have it, just so that when it comes time to put them in there, they're not this big?
We have five foot.
Five foot minimum, okay.
That's to start, and we had eight, eight of them. Think up there.
Alright, Jack?
Yeah, uh, Sandra, how, how high is the proposed retaining wall?
Which retaining wall on the backside?
On the, uh, butter side, Mr. Kearsley's side.
On the revised plans, we did update the retaining wall as well, so it angles over the retaining wall. Uh, the building is actually gonna be utilized as the retaining um, on on-site, so that's gonna be the, a good portion of it is going to be eliminated.
So, okay. So I think what the board's asking is more, more screening there than what you're showing. You get, beep that up.
They don't have to be maples, they can use, you know, the avivites.
White pine, whatever.
Yeah, but you know, anything that's grows and is letting, low maintenance.
Yeah, I just wanted to know if that retaining wall was very high, 'cause that may help actually, but doesn't seem to.
I have a question, if it's okay. Sandra Taft, eighty-nine Exbridge Road.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, on the Route sixteen side, has, yeah, right there, has it, has it been established that it can, on, an entrance and exit can be done on Route sixteen since the property?
Yeah, well, that's really, it's really not a planning board issue. That's, I mean, obviously, if they don't get approval from the state, um, they can't build it, or they can't at least build that entrance. Um, we're just, our job is to go through the plan, make sure the plan meets zoning, and then it's up them, to them to be able to facilitate with the state to get that opening. It's not, the planning board could deny the application on.
And if I made through the chairman, um, the, the entrance, we're only allowed to have one curb cut um, off of Route sixteen per DOT, and that one, um, is something that we did have to go back to them for, uh, because they didn't feel the need to have an access off of sixteen, however, there's already an existing entrance, um, for that site, so, you know, that we're, we're only allowed to have the one.
But you are working with them to.
Yes.
To.
Yep, we have a comment letter that we're gonna be submitting, re-submitting, um, our plan sets when we.
Yeah.
By tomorrow.
Really, whether they, it's, it's like with any, um, pe- pieces of Mendon's regulation, whether we bought a health or conservation, um, when it comes, comes to something like this, really doesn't fall under the planning board purview, uh, with, where to, you know, approve the site based on its, eh, how it applies to the Mendon zoning law. Um, this, um, whether they get approved for that or not, doesn't change the, the, you know, the, uh, confines of the, the application itself.
It'll, it'll just change the way that it looks.
It may, and they'd have to come back to us.
That's right, that's right. If the state denied, the, if this was approved and the state denied them, they'd have to come back to the board for at least a minor modification, if not a whole hearing, to obviously, uh, eliminate that and maybe make some accommodations on Nipmuck, I don't know.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, the.
And this is, I think, you said the proposed use was bath fitters, you have a small, like a retail showroom, light traffic, and then the rest of the space was for storage. Okay. Um, I'm just curious, what's the use case for the other building, and why did you decide on?
Storage cabinets, it just lost space to have inventory. My new inventory, you know, it's all the stuff, you know, comes a lot from far away, you receive sometimes, so, you know, it's best.
Is there a reason why you couldn't accommodate with one building? Just a larger-sized building?
If we do it too big, and then we go through sprinklers and all that complicated stuff, expensive stuff.
Okay. I, yeah, I guess I, I feel for the butter, right, they're kind of right on top of them, and it's because we're squeezing two buildings into the lot as opposed to a, as, as opposed to a single building. And it is a special permit, so I, I, I have some concerns about that.
Are you, are you within the set, the sideline setback?
On the west.
On the, on the, on the, on the east side? So you're, you're going, okay, so that you go, you went for a variance for that?
We did.
And you got approved?
Yes.
Sorry, so what's the setback on the east side?
On the east side, I think the minimum is twenty.
Yes.
In his houses, I'm sorry, this house is way back in the bottom where it's far away, so it's, the rendering, does it show as clear as the drawings?
Yes.
No. Uh, yeah, I think that's.
Well, yeah, the house was off the, off the front.
I wanna understand the distance, foundation to foundation between the house and the the right-side building. Jay, I think you've got a really good point. Like, I think we gotta consider, you know, the impact of the, the resident over there, and what we can be doing to, to better protect them. And I get a bare minimum, you know, better screening than, than what we've got right now. I mean, even just as I'm looking at, you know, the shadows of these trees right here, it's like, you know, you have a certain time of day, uh, you know, that, that, that's, those buildings are gonna cast, you know, shadow, that, that house, at least, you know, that's what it looks like in its rendering to me.
I think it, I think as far as, um, as far as the screening, I think that, you know, if we do a significant screening there, I think that you know, that would probably obscure most of the, uh, the residents in that home, uh, view of the buildings, I mean. It, um.
The rendering is tough. Maybe I'll take a drive-by and.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think, I think that looks a lot closer.
Screen for that, you look out your window, and you're just seeing.
I don't think it's as close as that.
Yeah.
I mean, it's tough. Um, kinda hard to, and it's even gonna be hard to visualize when you actually go there, because you don't have, even if you had some stakes in the ground, maybe you could, but is there any lot lines there? Any lot lines staked over there?
Yeah.
Between the.
Well, there's like a rip right now, and then some states, yes.
Even, I, I have a rangefinder, even with the distance to the, from foundation to foundation, I can range it, you know, get a.
I mean, does the plan, do you have a, do you show that house on a plan?
We can get it on there.
Okay, well, could you, uh, by the next meeting, could you get us?
I cannot date these plans either.
Well, as long as you can get. Well, as long as you can get, there's, there's a question here that, show us how, I want to know how many feet it is from the closest point of the foundation to that house, you know, for foundation, but the closest.
Yep, I can do that.
I think that would be easier than trying to go out there and, you know, look at it. Not knowing exactly. I'd rather have, I mean, you went to zoning, you got a variance.
Yeah.
That's on the west side, so it's on the other side as far as the variance. On the east side, you don't have a variance.
Oh, because you're within, you're within your setback.
Commercial, the commercial setback on, yes, commercial setback on Route sixteen's twenty feet. So they're, they're meeting the setback. So it is within, yeah, it is within zoning.
All right, well, then I mean, then that's, I mean, as long as you're meeting the setback, I thought you said you, you went for a, but either way, either way, okay. Either way.
See, uh, the building elevation, like what, sorry, what's the height of the building?
Uh, I don't have the architectural rendering, so as far as like the elevations, yeah.
That may change probably if you're gonna do some sort of a peaked roof to it, might give you a little bit different. But it's a single story, so it can't be much more than twelve, fifteen feet, right? The height of the building? Twenty-five, okay. Yeah, sorry, twelve foot door, yeah, right, so you're probably.
And have we seen a lighting plan yet?
That was asked, yeah.
Yep.
A lighting plan, additional screening on that side that maybe could help some of the members?
Yep.
Um, yeah, and I'd argue, you know, as you're developing that lighting plan, you know, as minimal lighting on that, that side that's, you know, facing the residential homes possible.
Yeah, and the, I mean, it's there, I believe there's only one person, um, person over on the dark side that, I just be a small wall backup of it.
Okay.
You know, for the event of an emergency, uh, facing that side.
Yeah, and there's, uh, there's regulations on, uh, the downlighting and leave the footprint of the property. Um, so make sure that it adheres to the,
Side of the house.
So even that, right, even that, east side of that building, I mean, at the end of the day, how much lighting does it even need on that side that, that it busts the house?
Yeah, there's,
You know, there's no water, there's no doors there, there's, really nothing. So, yeah, I mean, I guess, get everything in and what's good with Jeff, but probably try to make sure you get him a lighting plan as well, so he can, you know, give us the go-ahead on that. Anything else?
Is there any other comments from the community? I see we've had, um, uh, except for previous speaker, Mrs. Taft, um, we've had very little input from the community.
Yeah, there was a gentleman at the last meeting or the meeting before, I can't remember who he was.
He had talked about the special permit and, and the variance.
Oh, yes, I, I was present for that one. Yeah, he was, um, he claimed that the variance was, uh,
Moved.
But.
Had expired, but with the, the amount of work that had been done to that property, um, it complies with the variance.
When's the next meeting?
February third, because this, uh, about fifteen days on a Monday.
Okay.
Which is the third Monday.
Okay. February third, you think you can get everything, you could, maybe, and like I said, if you can get the renderings of the buildings to Dylan and Jack beforehand, we can get them out there. We have any comments, we can, before you come into that next meeting.
And also, uh, one more thing, um, in, in the zoning backlog, you'll see that it states that before you apply a sign permit, the, uh, the planning board has to approve a rendering. So please make sure that we get a chance to look at the sign before you apply for the permit.
We'll put that in the condition of approval too.
Yeah.
If, if it's approved, yeah.
Yes, thank you. Um, so, is there a motion?
So I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for seven Nipmalk Road to, uh, February third at six P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Bill Lambeau's in a way.
Can cross sign.
David Tenny, oh, I, oh, we, we, all in favor, oh, okay. And that's it, I think, right? You got anything else we gotta talk about? Jack, you all good?
I'm good.
Do another motion on the table? Make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Bill Lambeau's in a way.
Eric Hodge, I, David Tenny, oh, I.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you. Good night. Thanks.
All right.